Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start our May 12 meeting. And we are in order. Can I ask you all to rise and say the pledge? Hold on, I'm gonna actually come out to the floor for just a moment. Public Works Week. I'd like our Public Works Director, in full regalia, to come down and say the pledge with me. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Jay Spurgeon.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which it stands: One nation, under God, liberty and justice.
Now, Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent at this time. Mayor Protem Price.
Here.
Mayor Adam.
And I'm here. Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any requests for continuances. So I'm going to get out to the podium for some special presentations. There we are. Our first presentation is to a gentleman who is very well-known here in the community. And his name is Mr. Douglas Tapking. Doug, if you want to come up here, please. Doug is retiring as the Executive Director for the Area Housing Authority of Ventura. He's here with his wife Karen. And Doug has had 20 years of service with AHA. And they've been a great partner to the city. And you have about 40 years of experience in that affordable housing field. So, as I said, great partner to the city. I know you have a tradition in your family of community service. And I know that you want to continue that tradition. In fact, you're working with the Kingsman Shakespeare Group at California Lutheran. I know that's one of the things you do. And I suppose you're gonna want to catch up with things around the house.
Probably.
Get the garage clean, maybe? A few other? No? Not doing that? Okay. Oh, there you go. There you go. Spend some time with the family. Well, Doug, we really appreciate what you've done with the Area Housing Authority. And we really appreciate your service to the community. And I want to congratulate you on your retirement. And I want to present a certificate to you as well. And it's in combination and honor of Douglas Tapking for his outstanding contributions to our community. And we offer you best wishes in your retirement.
Thank you. Pleasure. Well, thank you very much for this recognition and for the chance to quickly address you. The reality is that I started my career in this city as an intern with the Public Works Department. And moved on from there and spent time in many different areas here during my high school and college years. And then spent time in other areas. It's also where we got our political start, obviously, in this community. So moved out, followed the job, did some work, went down to Los Angeles, worked with the Housing Authority there, moved up to Salt Lake, took over a Housing Authority up there, brought it up to speed. And then came back to California to bring up the Area Housing Authority, the County Ventura. And we have seven jurisdictions. And you have been one of our jurisdictions the entire time. In fact, this city is the lead entity in forming the Area Housing Authority. And so it was with a great deal of pride that I had the opportunity to come back and serve not only my city, my home city, as a graduate from Thousand Oaks High School in Moore Park, et cetera, but also to provide the type of service that we deal with and work with a council and staff that has been part of my life for the past 50-odd years. So, and Thousand Oaks was not a city. We did all kinds of crazy things in order to become a city. And today, we are probably the best city in Ventura County. And it's been my pleasure to work with each one of you individually, each one of you corporately, to work through, how? To work through all of the process of getting members elected and working with council members on affordable housing issues. And so I say thank you for 20 years of good service here and for 42 years of doing this type of work. My wife is with me tonight, who's kind of watched over this and made sure that we did things in the proper fashion. And some other friends are joining us tonight also in order to see this. So again, thank you for your time. I will not be leaving. We are planning on staying in our house and working within the community. As the mayor has indicated, I am currently on the Board of Directors for the Kingsman Shakespeare Company up at Cal Lutheran, a very different type of group than I'm used to dealing with, with actors and actresses and things like this. So, there's, even for an old guy, education continues to occur. So, thank you very much for your time. Mayor?
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Doug. I know we're gonna see you around town quite a bit. All righty. And next up, we have our Public Works Director Jay Spurgeon to join me at the podium, if you would please, Jay. Because this is, well, we're coming up on National Public Works Week, May 17 through the 23rd. And Public Works Department is, as you can imagine, essential in this city because it takes care of all the things that we tend to take for granted: water, and landscaping, and storm drains, and streets, and traffic, and all the things that make a city a city. And Jay is in charge of that department. And, as I said, we have Public Works Week coming up. And we also have a tour at Municipal Service Center that will be happening on May 19th and 20th that I encourage you all to go, "Oh, we got everybody here tonight. Great." All right. So Jay, tell us a little bit about the open house and Public Works Week, if you would, and then we'll give you a proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And yes, I'm joined here by a few of our 193 staff, women and men, from the Public Works Department for the city here. Public Works Week has been celebrated nationwide for more than 60 years. And this week, it is next week, is Public Works Week. And we will be having an open house, as the mayor indicated, on Tuesday and Wednesday, May 19th and 20th, at the Municipal Service Center, which is located out in Newbury Park at 1993 Rancho Caneo Boulevard. The theme for Public Works Week this year is "Community Begins Here." And as the mayor mentioned, this speaks to the quality of life that we enjoy here in our community, from clean water and safe streets, protected environment, public landscaping, transit, and clean neighborhoods. And there would not be a community without public work. So, we hope that you can join us, Mr. Mayor and council members, at one of our open houses. We love to showcase what we do. And we have well over 1,000 schoolchildren and other groups signed up to take tours, again, next week, Tuesday and Wednesday, May 19th and 20th. And if any group from the public would still like to sign up, you may do so. You can send us an email at publicworksmsc@tox.org or call 449-2499. So again, an email to publicworksmsc@tox.org or 449-2499. So we hope to see you there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation.
Thank you, Jay. Yes, and this proclamation is in honor of the 28th Annual National Public Works Week. And I think it's summed up right here where it says, "The quality and effectiveness of the city's public facilities are critically dependent upon the exemplary efforts of the Public Works Department." No question about it. Jay, let me present this to you. And why don't we get a picture? What do you think?
With everybody.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Let's all go up there. Come on down, council members. You get a shot. We really do have an exemplary Public Works Department. And I think you all know that by the quality of Thousand Oaks streets and its environment, second to none. And last, but not least, I'd like to invite John Turner to the podium. John is a Vice President of the Ventura County Chapter of the American Public Works Association. And fitting, befittingly enough, that we're in Public Works Week, John has an award for the City of Thousand Oaks that he'd like to present. Here, John? Here. Come on over to this one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, esteemed Public Works Department. Yes, my name is John Turner. I am the Vice President of the Ventura County Chapter of the American Public Works Association. Every year, we ask that communities that are part of our organization recommend projects that they believe are Projects of the Year. And we have several categories that we rank the projects by, but the peers in the group rate the projects. This year, we had three Project of the Year projects. And the City of Thousand Oaks Peterson Reservoir Structural retrofit was nominated as Project of the Year in the category for structural. So, on behalf of the Ventura County Public Works Association, don't be shy. I see you every month at lunch. I am here to present the Project of the Year Award. There you go. Congratulations.
Well deserved. Appreciate that, John. Thank you, Cliff. And with that, we are going to proceed onward with our meeting. Thank you very much. All right. Let us move on to public comments. If you would, announce those, please. Ms. Lawrence?
This is the time and place for public comments. The speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Five people have presented cards. In pursuit to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. First up is Kathy Lowry, followed by Stacy McKinnon. Hi, Kathy.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Lowry, City of Thousand Oaks. Also work for the City of Thousand Oaks in the Public Works Department. And I am your City Bicycle Coordinator. And this Friday is National Bike to Work Day. So I'd like to invite the community to join the city manager, city employees and residents in a ride down Herb's Road. The Herb's Road Improvement Project is complete, and it has the most beautiful bike lanes on it. We're gonna meet up at the Herb's and Arbelos Parking Lot. It's the Oakbrook Plaza. We're planning on leaving at 7:30 in the morning. We'll do a very leisurely ride down Herb's Road, ending up at City Hall. Next to the marquee will be a bike pit stop. The pit stop's open to the public from 7 to 9. There's free breakfast giveaways, bike giveaways, and free bike tune-ups. So I hope everyone in the community that's able to come out comes out, and I'll see you there with your bike and your helmet. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, Mr. Price.
Ms. Lowry, I'm really bummed that I'm gonna miss that, but when is, yeah, I'm gonna be out of town, but when is the Ride of Silence this year?
It's a week from tomorrow. It's, they're meeting at the Lakes next door at 5:30, and the ride starts at 6:30. I hope you can make that.
I can't either. But I did want members of the public to be aware of it and to attend. It's a great, both of those are gonna be wonderful events, and I'm very sad to miss each of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up, Stacy McKinnon, followed by Lori Sorensen. Hi, Stacy.
Good evening. I'm here to inform the City Council, pardon me, and the community that Peace Child is coming to Thousand Oaks in August. Peace Child is a musical play that will be performed here in this theater on August 28th and 29th. But it's not just a musical play, it's a community effort. We will be hosting children from nine countries, representing 11 languages. They will meet here the first weekend in August. They will start rehearsing and doing community outreach. They have already been requested by the Thousand Oaks Library, Westminster Presbyterian Church in Westlake, Ascension Lutheran Church, various schools and assisted living facilities in the area. And that's just the beginning. Every day, we're getting more questions and requests for the kids to come and perform and give their message. Peace Child is a platform for youth to present the future that they want to live in. It's for them to create a world in which they want to live, set to music. And it's a wonderful experience for all children. The cast is 20 children from nine languages. The youngest is nine, the oldest is 21. They're backed up by a chorus of local children. The youngest is seven, the oldest is 19. So it's 120 kids, most of them local, who will be performing here. My message is to get the word out to the community and to see if there isn't some way that the city can, I don't know if they endorse projects or approve of projects, but some way that we can say, yes, the City of Thousand Oaks is behind you. And that would help enormously for us to get the word into schools and churches and fraternal organizations in the community, so that the whole community can come together. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Lori Sorensen, followed by Lou Carpiak.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, and members of the City Council. My name is Lori Sorensen, 34-year resident of Westlake Village, Thousand Oaks, and 25-year co-director of Pacific Festival Ballet, named the Resident Ballet Company here at the Civic Arts Plaza in 2006. Pacific Festival Ballet's artistic director, Kim Miselli, and all of our dancers are in full dress rehearsal this evening for our beautiful production of Cinderella coming up this weekend. So I am here personally to invite you and our viewing audience to our beautiful ballet, Cinderella. Through the sponsorship of the Alliance for the Arts and the Kids in the Arts Program, we will be presenting this classic tale this coming Friday morning, May 15th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, in the Cavali Theater for over 1,500 Title I schoolchildren. And then on Saturday, May 16th, at 2 o'clock, and again at 7:00 p.m., we invite you to enjoy this family favorite. Yes, this is truly the season of Cinderella, from Disney's beautiful film to Rodgers and Hammerstein's musical, to our story ballet version, performed to Prokofiev's lustrous score. For Pacific Festival Ballet, the stroke of midnight is quickly approaching as we prepare this story of how goodness prevails, as this ballet comes to life with dazzling costumes, sets, and choreography. For 18-year-old Thousand Oaks resident Alexa Kernan, her dream will come true as she steps into sparkling pointe shoes as Cinderella. With a little help from her fairy godmother, 18-year-old Alyssa Kaplan from Calabasas, Cinderella and her prince will dance the night away. One of several guest artists joining the cast is ballet and Broadway veteran Jonathan Sharp reprising the role of the wicked yet comical stepmother. Accompanied by the mean stepsisters, Caneo Valley residents Jane Butler and Erin Dollopson, this trio taunts poor Cinderella until her golden carriage escorts her to the Royal Ball. The timeless story of Cinderella will capture our hearts and spark the imagination in all of us. Tickets are on sale at the Civic Arts Plaza box office. Don't miss Pacific Festival Ballet's Cinderella. I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Lou Carpiak, followed by Nick Kidway.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I had hoped to make this point with respect to the award given to Douglas Tapking today. I was actually hoping to do it before you awarded it to him, so that you could take into account what I'm about to say. As public sector and representatives of the public, you've got fiduciary duties to consider everything when you make an award of the sort. And you have to vet the individuals properly. I suspect that the vetting that has occurred so far has been based on his public persona, which many of you know what he has done in that sector, and it's very laudable. But not many of you know much about him personally. So I was asked by some staff members, who asked me not to disclose who they were, to provide somewhat of a balance to that by adding a few extra points that you might have wanted to consider. Or in the future, if you have any other awards for the man, for Douglas, you might want to consider these. Some are positive points and some are not. On the professional side, I, Doug has served for 20 years as the Housing Authority Executive Director, and I've served as general counsel for Doug for 20 years in that capacity, so I've got to know him quite well. And I can attest to what undoubtedly many of you know, that he's got character, integrity, moral standings, and is a principled individual. So he gets all of those as positive checkmarks. And then beyond that, then, I've also gotten to know him in other settings. For instance, I'm an avid woodworker, which he is too, and I'm aware that a lot of his woodworking is done in order to make charitable thingamajiggers that he makes, that he gives to charitable groups. So that's, again, a positive. I also happen to know, and I'm a woodworker with him too, so I can attest to it. I also happen to know that what he's like as a grandfather and the time he spends with his grandkids, much the same as I do. So I commend him for that as well. But there are a couple of negative points that at least need to be placed on the record. And the other positive thing is that he and I have times gone to the gun range and done target shooting, and he's definitely a marksman. So all of those are positive things. But at least two things you need to consider. And it's probably too late to take the award back, I would imagine. So just keep him in mind for the future. One of them, he's a terrible pinochle player. We play once a month, and I cannot say that he doesn't pull cards from some strange places, and he makes bets that are totally unwise. So I think you should know that for the future. And the second thing is that he's a terrible dancer. All kidding aside, I'm here just to support a very good friend who was a client professionally, and he grew to be a friend. And I'm sure I speak for some of the other people that have come to support him, to say kudos to his 20 years, and kudos to you for having recognized him. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. That's a nice tribute. I do think we can amend the commendation. It's probably not too late for that. No, it's good. Thank you, Lou. And finally, we have Nick Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful, my name is Nick Egbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newbury Park and executive director for Concerned Citizens since 1991, I believe. Honorable Mayor, it's great to see all the hoopla that the city is doing about promoting the special election, which is less than 30 days away now, I guess. But I'm still disappointed in that it's not been done well enough. I mean, it's nice to have brochures and push it, in fact, even on the agenda and everywhere. But what is needed is education. And with the birth and increase of the internet, I, we thought that just fancy flyers and et cetera would be out, and people would be able to make informed decisions. In fact, my friend Xena was here, and there was a lot of animosity and interest at that time for council. And the debate that was held in the forum for the candidates, it was put on a loop and 24 hours available on the city website. Now, they announced that, well, the League Forum will be televised on Time Warner at this time and that time. In fact, very few people have Time Warner anymore. And in fact, at the Cal Lutheran Forum, Time Warner never showed up, and it was... It was actually, thank you, DOTV, for jumping the gun even before I said, that's a still picture that I have off the forum. And you can watch it in its entirety on kadytv.net. And I have also recorded some of these, and they are available on my YouTube channel, which is Concerned Sits T Oaks on YouTube, which is Concerned Sits, C-I-T-Z, T Oaks. There was a very good forum at the Mobile Home Park that a lot of the mobile home people are interested in those questions. Those lights are not working, or I'm just getting blind? So, the good pastor has been talking about increasing citizens' participation and, it's great to see a breath of fresh air, even though he's 50, but he's really internet savvy or wants to be involved in having satellite meetings. I don't think you need satellite, you should just involve Skype, or Facebook, or FaceTime. And as a first step, just allow people to Twitter to the city clerk and make some of those comments available. In fact, we've gone backwards because the speaker cards are just not even mentioned anymore. When I first started in this city, the speaker cards were read out by the mayor. Why don't you do that? It's just that we are in a hurry to not have citizen participation and just move on. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. And that concludes our public comments. Mr. Mitnick, any follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the comments on the election at the end, you can watch the League of Women Voters debate that was held in this chamber. You can go to YouTube and you can watch it anytime you like. So we'll help get the word out about those type of viewing opportunities and more. And on our social media, there's a lot of information about how to vote, absentee by mail, and other deadlines and dates. So we'll continue to get the word out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. On to the consent calendar. Questions, items to be polled? All right. I do have a speaker card. Mr. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, surviving despite the punching from the dice. Nick Kidway, resident, Newbury Park. No wonder people don't want to show up. But, you know, I don't take it personally. This is a great country. In fact, I want to talk about the minutes again for, again. These are completely un-American. I mean, you should, I mean, you just had the visioning thing process go on. I mean, how can you live up to something like this, that our children or grandchildren, if they read these on a tablet or whatever is at that time, that they can't find out what was said, essentially? And it is a sad thing that no one, no one, on the dais, new people come up, nobody wants to go back to what their flag stands for and what the, this nation has been doing for such a long time. But nowadays, you know, like, see over here, it's all about PR. It's very sad. Appropriation is not required for business roundtable appointments. And they are... Appropriation is not required for business roundtable appointments, and they are reappointments. So the interesting thing is that the city has really no, in fact, it's true of politics in general, no standards as to SOPs, operating procedures, et cetera, as to who's appointed to committees, how it is people are appointed. Sometimes there are interviews, and they're held during the day. If you can't show up for the interview, you're automatically axed out. So working people, people who are working outside the city, they are kind of eliminated by just that process. And it is basically, and that's what this process is, it's a political process, and political appointments are made. And in fact, we have a planning commissioner running around touting that he is a planning commissioner and the city paid for his classes, and so that's what makes him qualified. I mean, if that was the basis, I mean, no one in the city is more qualified than me, but I'm not politically correct. And that's the reality. But to say that, in fact, to tout his financial expertise when Mr. Adam has the same wonderful expertise as a financial planner, I mean, what world are these people living in that they talk about these things? I don't know if you watch the forums, maybe you should, Mayor. And I would like to just touch on F, some seconds left, which is, again, free money. I mean, I'm glad that the good pastor, again, Rob McCoy, has talked about, I've seen the budget of the law enforcement in this city gone up hundred percent in twelve years. I wish my income had gone up by thirty percent. Nobody has, I mean. And what have we got? He doesn't know. We got a twenty-four-hour car. And so this is free money, and that's one of the reasons our country and our city is in debt and in deep trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Price, would you care to move the consent calendar?
I would move the consent calendar items seven B through seven G.
Thank you. Vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. All right, on to public hearing eight A, Community Development Block Grants. Ms. Lawrence, if you would open the public hearing, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item eight A, fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and related documents for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have three people that have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards, the speakers are allowed five minutes each.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Carolyn Milton, senior analyst, will give us our report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a brief presentation which I hope you will find informative. Tonight's public hearing is a required public comment opportunity and review of the city's proposed twenty fifteen sixteen CDBG action plan for community development block grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. One hundred percent of all beneficiaries of CDBG-funded activities must be lower-income persons. The following documents are provided for your approval. Under separate cover is the CDBG action plan. Page three of that document summarizes the city's proposed uses of five hundred and seventy-four thousand and seventeen dollars in federal funds effective July one, two thousand fifteen, through June thirty, two thousand sixteen. Funds will be used for multifamily and single-family residential rehabilitation programs, social services grants, and support services. Staff has prepared several PowerPoint slides, which we will look at in just a moment. Also, under separate cover are the required five-year consolidated plan and the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. For the first time, these documents were prepared on a regional basis in collaboration with the County of Ventura as lead agency. The consolidated plan describes housing resources and unmet housing needs. The analysis of impediments describes the region's progress in ensuring that all residents are provided with equal access to housing opportunities. The final document for council's approval is an update of the city's required citizen participation plan, a resolution that describes how the city provides the public and other stakeholders with opportunities to participate in the CDBG needs assessment process and review of all consolidated plan documents. Concerning the action plan, please review with me the following PowerPoint slides. Slide number one shows the proposed FY two thousand fifteen to sixteen CDBG budget comprised of capital improvements totaling three hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars, or sixty-five percent of the budget, eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars for social services grants representing fifteen percent of the CDBG budget, the maximum percentage allowed by HUD, and one hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred and three dollars for support services, also called program administration. This component represents twenty percent of the CDBG entitlement, the maximum percentage allowed by HUD. Slide number two shows the proposed CDBG-funded capital improvements budget of three hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. This includes one hundred sixty thousand dollars for the area housing authority's Los Arboles apartments, seventy thousand dollars for Many Mansions Richmond Terrace Apartments, and one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-one dollars for the city's single-family owner-occupied residential rehabilitation program. Slide number three. We're still on slide number two. This portion of the CDBG budget is typically used to fund city capital improvements in the city's lower-income neighborhoods, such as the recently completed Old Town West Public Improvements Project, or to fund renovation projects at affordable housing sites. Okay, now we're on slide number three. Each year, the city uses the permitted fifteen percent of its CDBG entitlement, plus at least one hundred thousand dollars from the city's own Social Services Endowment Fund, or SSEF, for operational support grants to local providers of public and social services. The proposed two thousand fifteen sixteen budget will fund twenty-eight grants, including seven CDBG-funded grants and twenty-one SSEF-funded grants. In conjunction with this item, staff is requesting that council approve the appropriation of one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the city's SSEF fund to leverage eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars in CDBG funds for the two thousand fifteen sixteen fiscal year social services grants budget totaling one hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen social services grants represent year two of the current grant cycle. The city council originally approved these grants one year ago in May, two thousand fourteen. Then the final slide shows how the city proposes to spend twenty percent of the CDBG entitlement grant for support services or program administration. The Fair Housing Counseling Contract is a collaboration with the County of Ventura and the Housing Rights Center of Los Angeles. This activity provides web-based or eight-hundred-line phone support for residents with questions about potential housing discrimination or landlord-tenant issues. Therefore, in order to preserve the city's eligibility for CDBG dollars and to fund twenty-eight social services grants with CDBG and SSEF funds, staff requests the council's approval of the four recommendations shown on page one of the staff report. These items are required for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by this Friday, May fifteen. Finally, staff is requesting that the council authorize the city manager to make proportional adjustments in the event, as has happened in the past, that HUD changes the dollar amount of the city's next CDBG entitlement grant. Regarding the staff report, I regret that a number of minor drafting errors were not corrected before the packet was printed. These items have been addressed in today's supplemental packet, and I apologize for any inconvenience or confusion these errors may have caused. Staff would now be pleased to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. Questions for Ms. Milton? Ms. Bill Lepenya.
Good evening, Ms. Milton. Thank you for the presentation. It is a really complex report with all of these different recommendations before us tonight. I was wondering if you could tell us more about the recommendation number B and C, the Ventura County Regional Consolidated Plan? It is my understanding that this is a county program, but I believe that the city may have started to participate in that through the Senior Master Plan.
I'm not familiar with the Senior Master Plan, but I do intend to find out more about it and the Council on Aging's activities to potentially help seniors find housing that they can afford. The consolidated plan before you tonight and the analysis of impediments represent the first time that the county and all ten cities in Ventura County have collaborated to create one regional report, one for the HUD programs, and one for the analysis of impediments, rather than eleven separate reports, which might be very repetitive and certainly would be more cumbersome for each staff to put together. So in the past, each city and county has done their own reports, but this time, the county hired an excellent consultant that has, I think, produced some very high-quality documents that represent Thousand Oaks and all the other venues, all the other jurisdictions in Ventura County, giving a complete summary of existing housing resources and some related areas, and as well as unmet needs that have been addressed during the needs assessment process. The city also collaborated with the county on the needs assessment, and a number of workshops and hearings were held throughout the county to help identify all needs that could potentially be addressed with CDBG funds, as well as home funds, which the city of Thousand Oaks does not receive directly.
Thank you. I look forward to receiving a report or information from either you or the Council on Aging on the Home Share Ventura Program. I understand that the Global Senior Center matches seniors with other seniors who have a home and have rooms to rent. So with the population of Thousand Oaks growing older over the next, by twenty-five percent over the next, I believe, seven years or five years even, I think there will be a greater need to find some sort of affordable homes for seniors, and that is why I wanted to point out the Home Share Program. And then my other question is, in the supplemental packet here, we have Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County challenging the staff recommendation. I'm not sure whether we will hear from them tonight. Are there speakers? There are? Okay, I do have questions regarding that, but I'll wait then. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill Lepenya. Any other questions? I do have a question myself. Under the multi-unit residential rehab program, the area housing authority and Many Mansions, it's proposed that both of those entities receive some funds. The Senior Alliance for Empowerment, which goes by the acronym SAFE, which I will use from this point on, is not proposed that they receive funds under that program. However, if I remember from last year, under the single-family residential rehab, SAFE could apply for funds in that program. Is that correct?
SAFE did apply for CDBG funding and a copy for the coming year, and a copy of their application is included as an exhibit to the action plan.
All right. Okay. My only concern about that is the format that's offered there, eleven randomly selected units, up to ten thousand per unit, doesn't jibe exactly with the needs that SAFE presents. Because SAFE shows forty-one units that need various amounts of work, some for as little as two hundred dollars. So is there, and I think I asked this last year, is there any way to somehow, you know, tailor the format to address some of these smaller needs that the Senior Alliance for Empowerment needs to fix some of these units?
I do remember that this was discussed last year. Unfortunately, when CDBG funds, and I'm sure the same is true for other federal funding sources, there is such a complex eligibility and vetting process for any potential beneficiaries, and also for the kind of activity that will be used, that will be funded with the federal dollars. And these administrative costs are significant, which makes it difficult to justify using the funds for very small jobs or scopes of work at various locations. So the eleven locations or the eleven grantees that we are identifying who would benefit from the city's next owner-occupied residential rehab program, that's what we think that our budget will be able to afford, taking into account the administration costs that we have and the budget that we have.
Yeah, I see. It's kind of unfortunate, though, because some of these needs on this list from SAFE are, you know, nominal but important, you know, two hundred dollars to fix rotting porch steps, for example. It'd be nice to be able to address that. Just one more question. Did SAFE, in fact, apply last year for some of these funds and get any?
SAFE applied last year, and they have applied this year. But so far, given our limited funding, and given that the city has its own model of its own program for owner-occupied, low-income, single-family homeowners, we decided to stay with our own program for the time being. And all of the, there is no doubt that all of the residents, all of the eligible residents that are being served, that are being assisted through the city's program, as well as through Habitat's program, and any other homes or residences that have been identified by SAFE, all of these households, all of these persons are very low-income. Most are seniors, and all are worthy of assistance. They're all deserving. So it's just a matter of how you select them.
Yes.
And the city is currently using a lottery system, which we feel is very fair, because it gives everyone, no matter where they live, an opportunity to receive some public funding to rehabilitate their homes.
Yes. Yes, limited funding and a lot of need. That's a tough equation. Well, I hope you give SAFE a good look this year. Thank you, Ms. Milton. I do have some speaker cards, and the first one is George McGee, followed by Nick Kidway. Hello, George.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor Adam and council members. I'm George McGee. I'm the Director of Housing Assets for the Area Housing Authority. The Housing Authority would like to thank you for the opportunity to apply for the current year CDBG funds. current year's CDBG funds. We would like to thank city staff, especially Caroline Milton and Lynn Oshida for working closely with the Area Housing Authority on this application. As is shown in the slides, the funding is for the Los Arbeles Apartments that was purchased in 1998 with a partnership with the city to ensure the continued affordability of the property. The intention was, and continues to be, to provide decent, affordable housing for seniors, the disabled, and working families, many of whom are single parents of school-aged children. The intended use of the CDBG funds is twofold: to improve water and energy savings, thus allowing us to keep rents low, and as important, to provide a safe environment for the seniors, the disabled, and our families. The Area Housing Authority is committed to working together with community resources to help our school-age residents to be self-sufficient in life. We provide onsite after-school tutoring through our partnership with California Lutheran University. Our youth are doing measurably better in school and have less discipline issues. Also, as a result of the positive influences of our tutors, we are seeing more of our high-school-age youth applying to colleges, university, and trade schools. During the summer, many of the youngsters do not have access to lunches, let alone healthy lunches. To fill this need, we partnered with the Canal Valley Unified School District and provide onsite supervised lunches and activities throughout the summer. Los Arbeles Apartments serves the housing needs of low, very low, and extremely low-income seniors, disabled, and families. For a very low-income family afford, that is around $45,000 a year. Our rents are low enough that only approximately 30% of their incomes go to rent, in an area where paying 50% or more for rent is the norm. It is our commitment to the city of Thousand Oaks and the residents to continue to maintain the Los Arbeles Apartments as part of the city's affordable property portfolio. And again, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to apply for the funds this year. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Next up, Nick Kidway, followed by Stephen Dwyer.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. I guess Deputy Chair of the Social Services Committee that is in hibernation. I've been on the committee for about 20 years. By the way, Clippers are losing 4-0 right now. So that's the real game that's going on right now. So I have to leave. Thank God. I was chair when we went to a two-year funding and supported it, and we did a lot of work. Jackie Chang was a committee member who was really instrumental in doing that, but I think that was a mistake. I talked before also that the council should really look into this and bring back, that the committee should vote every year, meet every year. And I would like if the staff would give a synopsis of Habitat for Humanity's wonderful letter in the green packet. The council is good that it's right up there regarding the lottery system and how the needy and especially, Ms. Lepenya was talking about the very aged, that's not the right word, but over 85 age group is really being shortchanged right now in this program. Before I forget, I must, since I've worked with staff, commend the staff member who has been a lone voice of reason in the department and in the city for years and works diligently with very little reward. So my hats go off to wonderful people who give off everything so that the people who are less fortunate in our community are able to live better. You know, Mayor, the middle class is under attack, especially in this city where mortgage rates are high. My next-door neighbor was kicked out, and the home was on the market in the auction for three, four months, and every, I mean, people coming, "How much do you think they want, when how long has it been?" This is going on right in our neighborhoods. And for the love of God, I'm not in foreclosure, but we are just two, three payments away from being on the street. And when times are so tough, when we cannot take care of our roads and we have a negative $4 million balance, I mean, it's unbelievable. I'm glad that the candidates have brought it up. I mean, why the heck are you giving $8 million, some interest-free and et cetera, to the auto dealers? I mean, when there are such pressing needs. And the reason is, I mean, if you read, or like I'm on the committee, from the people who are hurting, and on the other hand, there's such a disconnect with the council and the residents. And there's no people with white hats here, unfortunately. There's no champion like Tony Lamb used to be on the council. Being on the committee for such a long time, I've seen the, and you have a little bit of a graph, and the staff did not go into it, the cutbacks in the budget from the federal government, and the city has done absolutely nothing, or the council has done absolutely nothing. In fact, I used to meet with Jackie Irwin, and she said that, and we had requested that there should be another, there was mention about a vetting process and all that for new, we do not encourage, allow new nonprofits to come up because we don't have enough money, that we should have another endowment. And she was promised by a very high, the highest staff member, that an endowment would be established. But because of the economy or something like that, that became a lower priority. Of course, these people who are homeless or have little money, they don't have the clout that car dealers have. In fact, people are doing good. I mean, this is a flyer in the lobby about manner by Dr. Lynette Shipman, who's, I guess, helping get food for the people who really need in our community. Just in closing, one of the things that the council goal a few years ago was, and I live right across from it, was Caneo Creek, which had a lot of crime, and the kids had problems, stuff like that. And we were told, and we gave substantial funds from our limited budget to solve the Caneo Creek problem. And there are new committee members that do not know the history and all that and wanted to cut it completely. And I am an alternate on the committee that gave $500,000 to the schools, auditoriums, et cetera. Two council members sit on it. And I asked that we should really do something about Caneo Creek. And we have rubber stamps. The staff spoke against it, so none of the, and the four elected people were my favorite, but no one would even say one word about it. Thank you for letting me speak. Let's hope that the Clippers bring the championship back to LA.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Stephen Dwyer. Hello, Stephen.
My name's Steve Dwyer. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm also the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity in Ventura County. So I'd like to just make a few points of emphasis on some things that have already been mentioned. First of all, I would encourage the council to reconsider and review the allocation of funding in the CDBG programs to more adequately address the aging population in Thousand Oaks who owns their own home, and often, as they age and want to age in place, need some additional assistance or modifications to the home, many of them living on fixed income, even though they own a great asset here in this city. And so I think it is a little bit lopsided towards the rental units versus the, what is becoming an increasing need here for our aging population in Thousand Oaks. More specifically, I would urge the council to reconsider the model being used for the current low-income residential repair program. And the reason I say this is because we do already work with several cities and the county of Ventura using CDBG funds to support low-income residents who are homeowners, and none of them operate a lottery system. So while I do understand that there might be a few cumbersome aspects of an application system, we work very successfully with other cities and the county on a need-based system, where residents apply, they work through Habitat, we then work with the city and vet their application, verify income, verify the need, and agree with the city that this is a proper applicant to receive assistance. We then, as a nonprofit, work with vendors and volunteers to stretch the funds as far as possible. So I do make this comment from a position of experience over the last couple of years. Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County, in addition to building affordable homes, four years ago began what we call our Preserve a Home program, which is low-income homeownership, repair, and renovation. First year, we served five families, then six, then 16, and this year will serve 40 families on under $200,000 of total CDBG funding. And so this program is saying for $145,000, we ought to be able to support about 10. I think there are ways to do better, and I think there are ways to vet the applicants such that the most basic needs are being met. And that's what I see as the real issue with the lottery system, that while it is easier to administer, I'm sure, it does not in any way guarantee that those with the most basic needs are receiving adequate funding for the home that they want to live in, in a safe and secure manner. We were able to support 16 homeowners in a mobile home park here in Thousand Oaks, and unfortunately, the city wasn't even able to support us with even $1,500 to provide support. And we went out and were able to support with private donors. But that's an indication, I think, that all the money was locked up in the lottery system, even though some residents here in Thousand Oaks were living without functioning hot water, without adequate heat, actually, without functioning heat. And so those are the kinds of needs that I think we could address better with a different model in how the funds are distributed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. And I do have a statement card that will enter into the record. Ms. Milton, do you have some follow-up? All right, thank you. And questions of the council? Ms. Bill Lepenya.
Normally, we do reply to some of the comments made, and I was wondering whether staff can reply or comment on the statements made by Habitat as to why Habitat wasn't chosen.
Well, I think I'll, I can respond to the two points that Mr. Dwyer made, the first one being the emphasis, perceived emphasis on multiple-family housing versus single-family housing in our rehab program. We have about six, as Ms. Milton pointed out in her presentation, we are limited to basically using up to a maximum of 65% of our, or minimum of 65% of our CDBG grant on capital projects, and those can include public works projects, and they can also include improvements to private property as long as it benefits low-income people. And in the past, we've usually put that money into either city capital projects, such as the Old Town West project, or into the affordable housing projects that the city actually has, through our former redevelopment agency, a substantial investment in. These include projects that are owned and operated by Mini Mansions and owned and operated by the Area Housing Authority. And many of these projects are aging, and they need roof repairs, they need new and more efficient utility systems, including water conservation, they need upgraded or repairs, deferred maintenance, et cetera. They are not running these projects as big profit centers, and the use of CDBG money for preserving, enhancing the supply of affordable housing is a major HUD goal that all recipient communities need to take into consideration. And by allocating the money to the multiple-family projects with affordable housing covenants, that's guaranteeing the money is benefiting low-income residents and helping protect the investment that the city, through its former redevelopment agency, has. We do have loans on all of these properties. So the balance we've struck is roughly 60% for the guaranteed affordable housing that's in the multiple-family projects and about 40% for single-family projects. And those involve individual applicants applying. And then the model that we use, the lottery and the council can adjust that. 60-40, we think, is reasonable, but there's no magic wand on this. But we do feel that that's, when we deal with those multiple-family projects, it's a very efficient way to target those resources to help maintain those projects. And there is sensitivity in the community about affordable housing projects and whether they fit into neighborhoods, and, you know, they need to look like the neighborhood they're in, they need to be kept up well, you can't let the deferred maintenance go, otherwise you lose your investment. And then as far as the, getting back to the suggestion regarding the lottery, or a different model than the lottery, I think there are needs, you've heard dire needs expressed here. I think Ms. Milton has told you that there are other locations in Thousand Oaks where you have the same dire needs. We have very limited resources because we're dealing with federal dollars, and accountability is really at a premium, both in terms of the income, verifications of the recipients, and the documentation, the analysis and auditing of the work that's actually performed and who's getting paid for doing that work. The cost of administration is a little bit on the high side. And through that lottery system, we believe that gives everybody in town that meets the low-income standard, it's limited to lower-income people, gives them a chance, an equal chance. It's a very difficult thing to be presented with 150 applications, which we do get, and sitting down one by one and trying to determine, well, this person is more needy than that person, and this project is more deserving of our subsidy, if you will, than that project. And that's why we've developed the lottery system to give everybody an equal chance. And residents of the SAFE community, as well as other mobile home communities, have applied and can apply for those grants.
Yes, they have applied and can apply, but don't really qualify, because I understand they did apply last year but didn't, they were not chosen.
The SAFE organization, I believe, applied for a block grant of funding that they could then use throughout the Ranch Mobile Home Park for various residents, similar to what they have requested for this year. But then separately from that, a number of the residents from Ranch Mobile Home Park, as well as from some of the other mobile home parks and throughout the city, they also applied for the single-family owner-occupied program, and at least one, and I think maybe two, have been selected for that program and have benefited.
Okay. A question I have, can our Social Services Committee, the Citizen Committee, go over the 150 applications or so, or is that considered too much work for them?
Well, at present, I don't believe that that type of activity is included in their resolution, in their scope of work, but that could be looked at. It would take an inordinate amount of time, I would imagine, to adequately screen, for the committee to screen 150 applications, and they would also need significant training so they would know exactly what to look for, because in addition for, in addition to the income, the type of rehabilitation, and the need that's established at their location is also something else that needs to be looked at. Currently, we have a consultant group that does all of that, that goes to the site and talks to the homeowner and takes photographs and is able to analyze, from an expert's point of view, exactly how much the rehabilitation that the owner is requesting would cost. So also, there's another aspect in that the income verification opens up questions of confidentiality and privacy, because the potential grantees have to provide a lot of very personal information about their income, their bank accounts, their assets, et cetera. So that certainly, I think, could not be anything that a committee would look at.
Okay, and then my last question is, is there some sort of oversight of recipients of grant money, regardless of which, from which pool it comes, that are able to get, say, CDBG money for rehab and also get HAPS money?
Well, I think those funds would be used for different purposes. For example, For example, I believe HAPS money is used to help low-income persons pay their utility bills. So yes, in a way, they're, they would, a very low-income person might be eligible for HAPS, and also be selected for participation in the city's program. And if they could meet the eligibility requirements, then yes, I believe they could benefit from both programs.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing and go to my fellow council members for discussion and/or motion. Mr. Price.
You know, this is always a very difficult discussion that we have, and I certainly wish that we had a larger pot of money to help those that are in need, but at the end of the day, this decision has to be made based on the money that we do have. And having read the staff report, heard the explanations that have been given by staff, although I was moved a little bit by what Mr. Dwyer had to say about working with other cities, and I'd be curious and would certainly suggest that maybe he provide some feedback to our staff on how it is that they're able to get around some of what we perceive to be really insurmountable problems that would eat up more money than would go to the programs, just in the administration. So I'd be very interested in having that information provided to the staff. But in light of that, I am going to move staff's recommendation, one through four, on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any discussion with that? I would just add to that, that the reality is, we are facing a situation of diminishing funds. In 2006, we received over 700,000. Here we are in 2015 at 574. It's a 20% decrease, and it shows no signs of increasing in the future. So again, there's a huge need, 150 applications with diminishing funds is a tough job for staff. I do believe that their process ensures that the money filters through the administration level, administrative levels as best as possible, and gets to where it's needed most. So I'm going to be in favor of that motion. And there's no further discussion? Yes, Ms. Bill Lepenya.
I think this is the first time that Habitat is actually applying for assistance in this particular circumstance or case. And depending on what we find out as to how Habitat is able to work with other cities, maybe it helps us to, for the next application cycle, because listening to Mr. Prescott, it seems to me, and it sounds, as though no other charity will be able, or few charities will be able, to dip into that pool of money, because we have a longstanding relationship with the area housing authority and Mini Mansions, which are getting the bulk of this, of this pot of money. And so I want to make sure that perhaps in the future, there will be, we have a clearer picture, and see if other charities, such as Habitat for Humanity, which is a very reputable organization, will be able to take advantage of what we have to offer. Yes, Mrs. Milton? Okay. I know, I'm not supposed to. But anyhow, those were my comments, and I will reluctantly support this, but again, as already stated by my colleagues, money is getting scarce, and we're trying to do more with less, and it is unfortunate, so, but I will support the nominee, the--
Thank you, Ms. Bill Lepenya. And I do believe Habitat can apply under the single-family residential rehab, can they not?
Individual residents could, yes.
All right. Anyway, motion on the floor, if you vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you very much. And we will move on now to our second public hearing, 8B, a zone change for the Kelly Road property. Mr. Jeff Spector, our senior planner, will present that.
I'll open the hearing. Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 8B, Zone Change 2014-70198, from public quasi-public and institutional lands and facilities to C2 highway and arterial business. Development Agreement Number 2014-70197 with the Caneo Valley Unified School District, relative to property located southeast corner of East Kelly Road and Newberry Road. The applicant is Caneo Valley Unified School District. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Five people have been presented, have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, the applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and the remaining speakers are allowed five minutes each.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. It's all yours, Mr. Spector.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Adam, and members of the city council. We're here tonight to discuss a proposal for a change of zone for a piece of property at the southeast corner of East Kelly Road and Newberry Road. It involves two matters, essentially a zone change from public, quasi-public and institutional lands and facilities, that's the name of the zone, to a zone, C2 zone, which is highway and arterial business. It also, this proposal also involves a development agreement with the Caneo Valley Unified School District and the city that imposes restrictions on future uses of the land, and it also authorizes the use of redevelopment agency bond proceeds to construct improvements that benefit the property. And lastly, we're asking for the council to approve a mitigated negative declaration for the property, for the project. The property's a little under 10 acres, and it's currently being used by the school district for its maintenance and operations yard, as well as the continuation high school, known as Caneo Valley High School. The, the high school occupies a building, or two buildings, that are designated landmark within the city, known as the Timber School and the Timber School Auditorium. This is an arid view of the property, showing the maintenance and operations yard on the south side of the property, and the high school on the north side of the property along Newberry Road. As a matter of background, I'd just like to point out that the, this change of zone, it basically implements a longstanding goal of the school district and the city. The intent is to relocate the current uses to new facilities, and to redevelop the property with commercial uses. The district is selling the property, and is planning to use the proceeds of the sale to relocate the school and the maintenance and operations facility. Here we have a street view from Kelly Road. It's an entrance driveway to the maintenance and operations yard. This is the other side, the eastern side of the property, showing the warehouse part of the facility. I'd like to call your attention to this historic landmark, the Timber School House and the Timber School Auditorium. As I said before, it's a designated city landmark that currently houses the high school, Caneo Valley High School. And there, the school is currently under the protections established by the Cultural Heritage Board back in 2004. It's basically intended to preserve the historic value of the school. Here's a street view of the property from Newberry Road. It is the original schoolhouse, built in 1924. It consists of two main, at least at the time that it was built, two main rooms. Right at the corner of Kelly Road and Newberry Road is the auditorium. That was built years later, actually in 1948. This is a view of the rear of the property as it exists today. And now I'd just like to mention again, the change of zone from PL, which is public lands, if you will, to C2. And this change to a commercial designation is completely consistent with the general plan designation, which is commercial. And it's also consistent with the adjacent commercial zoning and commercial land uses. This is a zoning map, it shows to, you can see to the east and the west, we have commercial zones. And this is a general plan land use map, the red area constitutes commercial designations. As for the development agreement, there's an emphasis in the, in the development agreement that the historic landmark school and auditorium shall remain intact, be preserved, and remain on-site to the degree practical. Another aspect of the agreement is certain land uses that are generally undesirable in this area would be prohibited. The agreement also requires that the future development of the property be well-integrated and designed in a comprehensive way. The agreement expires after five years, unless extended by mutual agreement. And it also requires that a deed restriction be placed on the property to extend the land use limitations after that five-year period. Another important aspect has to do with the authorization, or just a notation, I guess, that the city will allow use of up to $3 million of redevelopment agency bond proceeds in order to build public infrastructure improvements. And for example, there's a city storm drain that runs across the property that'll need to be relocated, so the property can be developed. Another aspect is the application fees for the zone change and development agreement have been deferred, and it calls for the property owner to pay those fees at the time that the property is sold. With respect to SEQA, the environmental document we prepared for this project was a mitigated negative declaration, and that document concluded that the project won't have a significant effect on the environment, based on implementation of mitigation measures. So with that, staff is recommending that the council tonight introduce an ordinance to approve the proposed zone change and the mitigated, mitigated negative declaration, and introduce a separate ordinance to approve the proposed development agreement. So with that, I'll conclude, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Spector. Questions? Mr. Spector? Ms. Bill Lepenya.
All right, I'm the only one asking questions, it seems, okay. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I wanted to add that Timber School is also protected as a historical landmark under Ventura County. I think the Heritage Board, Ventura County as well, designated it a landmark, not only our city council heritage, cultural heritage board. The public improvements of up to $3 million, where is that money sitting right now?
Perhaps John can, John Prescott can describe it.
Actually, the deputy finance director, Jamie Boscarino, is going to address that.
Thank you. The bond proceeds are currently sitting in a capital projects fund, so they're completely restricted in that fund, only to go towards public infrastructure improvements.
Great. And it says that the developer may request up to $3 million. In a perfect world, he wouldn't request anything, but what if, if not all of the money is used, then what, where does the rest of the money go? Or if no money is used? Can it be used for other city projects?
It can only be used within the former Newberry Road project area, and we did have a supplemental memo in your packet this evening that showed the boundaries of that project area. And then it can only be used for public infrastructure purposes, which is the purpose for which the bonds were used. And the state, as part of their dissolution of redevelopment agencies, threw us a little bit of bone by, a little bone by allowing us to keep those bond proceeds rather than turning them back. But we have to use them for the purposes they were initially issued for, and that's confined to that project area, 275 acres, I think it is, in the Newberry Road area, and public infrastructure improvements.
And if the money were not used for that particular, I'm speaking hypothetically, I'm not trying to make anybody nervous on the school district side, but if the money weren't used for that project, what other pressing project is there in the redevelopment zone, the Newberry Park development, redevelopment zone?
We're not aware of anything immediately pressing. I think there's, you know, been some, long ago, drainage studies in that area that may have suggested some pretty major capital improvements that would, if fully carried out, would eat up to 3 million, and probably 3 to 6 million more. And there's a question--
Is that the one where the U.S. Corps of Engineers is looking at? Is that part of it?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And, but there's really a question whether those are needed anymore because of the, the way the general plan's built out, and now the individual stormwater detention requirements that are in place. So, you know, I think it would be, you know, over time, there would be projects that would be identified that could use that money.
And what if the public improvements on the Kelly Road site will require more than $3 million? What happens if it's twice as much, then the developer will just pay?
Yeah, that's correct. And I think, again, we're just talking about the public improvements, which would be your street widens, and I think the streets there are probably at their, you know, full widening now, sidewalks, streetlights, storm drainage. I think, I think Mr. Spector mentioned there is a city storm drain that goes diagonally across the property, it's underground, a culvert, and that will need to be relocated. So the cost of relocating that to the, out in the public streets would be an eligible cost. But I think, you know, I don't think it's likely that the entire 3 million would be needed.
I think the current estimate right now for those public improvements is about 2.6 million, so it is with, under the 3 million currently.
And then if it did exceed that, it would be the developer's responsibility. In other words, these would be, normally, these would be requirements that would be put on any developer as part of a, a development project, that they improve the adjacent public streets and infrastructure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
So along those same lines, then, those bond proceeds that, that could potentially not be spent would remain available to us for public infrastructure improvements in that area in perpetuity?
Yeah, we're not currently aware of any specific timeline that we have to follow in order to spend those bond proceeds, so they would remain in that capital projects fund until we identified another source at some point.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we will move on to our speakers, and we have the applicant's representative here, Joel Kirschenstein. Mr. Kirschenstein, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. Joel Kirschenstein, on behalf of the Caneo Valley Unified School District. In addition to myself, Dr. John San is here this evening representing the school district. If there are any specific questions that the council would like to direct at him, he's available for that as well. Mark Seller is here, representing the buyer, and I believe will also have a comment or two. First of all, I really want to thank staff, all of the staff, for the incredible amount of work that's gone into this evening over the past years. This is-- This is, this part of the phase of these properties has really been a ten-year effort for the school district and the city. And we've appreciated the professional relationship with city staff and the district's team and the district staff. So we wanted to say that, I certainly wanted to say that on the, from the outset. The Board of Education supports the hearing this evening. It supports the recommendation of staff, and they appreciate the work that the council has, has before them this evening, and looks forward to a successful conclusion of this. And I'd like to go over, just bring the council current on where we are as far as the progress of this, of Kelly Road and the related collateral sites. As of this evening, the Caneo Valley Unified School District has all four relevant properties in escrow as of today. And those properties include Kelly Road, as you well know, with, with a, what we think is a good buyer. We have two properties in escrow for the relocation of the maintenance and operation facility, and then we have a collateral property, as you're well aware of, Caneo Center Drive, which was part of the original triangle, which will bring proceeds into the city. All those are moving forward. We have a minor ingress and egress issue that we're working, that the buyer of Caneo Center Drive is working out with staff, and we're doing all of the due diligence issues and items right now on the two properties we're acquiring, and will be working closely with city staff with any permits that are needed for those properties. So all is moving forward regarding the original intent, and the district has submitted, or is in the process of preparing the plans for the Department of State Architecture for the relocation of Caneo, of Caneo Valley High School, which will be basically a relocation of a secondary facility that will reopen in a different educational program. So there's a lot more than just the escrows and the approvals that are moving forward. So the city and district have reached their primary objectives, in our opinion, why this is deserving of support. The city is securing the desired appropriate land use for both the upper and the lower portion of Kelly Road. And that has been, as we know, a long-term goal of the city and of city staff and of city policy. In addition, the Old Timber School, that has been covered by staff, has been preserved and supported by the district as requested, as required, and has recommended by the council by resolution, and that resolution was part of an escrow transaction. So the escrow for Kelly Road contains that resolution to protect the Old Timber School. It's not just an abstraction. And the Caneo School District, again, has achieved its objectives, which are to create a new educational facility and to move its M&amp;O facility into an appropriate industrial setting and out of the commercial setting that has developed on Kelly Road with the residential lands behind it. The prior redevelopment funds that have been discussed, as you know, are in an exhibit in the development agreement, and that is also in the escrow assignment. So for purposes of clarification, the buyer does have first shot at those funds, and then however that deliberates will be between the buyer and the city council and the planning commission. The end result is a, in my professional opinion, a model of public-public partnership. It's been a long bumpy road at times, but we stayed, we all stayed the course, and we're now, we've arrived in a place that I think the school district and the city of Thousand Oaks can be proud of. And we only have a few more months to go for the escrows to conclude, and then we have a very, a very good relationship for a short-term leaseback of the facilities on Kelly Road once we receive the proceeds to go into the acquisitions of the other properties. And then we anticipate that process taking approximately nine to 12 months for the relocation of the maintenance and operation facility into the new facilities, and approximately 12 to 14 months for the relocation of the high school. So that will be, all of that will be moving forward with, with good diligence. And in conclusion, we made it. It's been a long road, and we, we've all made it. We have a little bit more to go and a few more details to work with the council, but again, on behalf of the board and the entire staff, we really appreciate this evening, and we're very supportive of the motion before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschenstein. A question from Ms. Bill Lepenya.
Yes, what is the, the, the buyer proposing to, to build?
That's not, I, I told the school, tell school board clients from day one that they're not planning commissioners. So we don't get into, we don't even ask the question. It's not our responsibility, and, and we have, and I didn't ask the question, but we know they're a responsible buyer. And the only thing we did focus on is the Timber School, to make sure that they really understand that that's not up for grabs and they have to use that.
Very important, thank you.
It's an important item.
Perhaps Mr. Sellers can illuminate a little bit on that question. Thank you, Mr. Kirschenstein. And Dr. John Sand is here for any questions from the council. Next up, we have Mitchell Schwartz. Sorry, Mark, you're after Mitchell.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mitchell Schwartz, and I'm a resident of Newberry Park. I'm first going to read the prepared statement that I had written prior to hearing that an escrow deal is in place and that this is obviously a done deal. But first, I'm going to read what I had written. "My name is Mitchell Schwartz, and I'm a resident of Newberry Park. I'm here today to encourage the council not to rezone the property on the southeast corner of Newberry Road and Kelly Road, the current location of the Caneo Valley High School, from PL, public institutional land, to C2, highway and arterial business. The land at the southeast corner of Newberry Road and Kelly Road has been used for educational purposes for many, many years. As Caneo Valley High School, the continuation school, this facility has helped many students who are having challenges at either Newberry High or Thousand Oaks High to achieve their goal of high school graduation. This facility has truly helped many people. While it's my understanding that the Caneo Valley High will continue to exist in a new location, this location should remain a place for learning. Do we really need another strip mall or a Kohl's type of shopping center? I don't think so. When the rezoning of the now Kohl's Shopping Center, located across the street from the site on the southwest corner of Newberry Road and Kelly Road, was being debated, the Pro-Development Anti-Resident City Council, led by Andy Fox and crew, approved the rezoning, even though the majority of the residents in the surrounding neighborhood were very much against this project, citing that the project was too big for this residential neighborhood. However, the rezoning went forward, and the Kohl's Center was built, and I challenge that this center has not made our neighborhood better. If you go to any strip mall or shopping center in Thousand Oaks and/or Newberry Park, you'll find that in every center, there are vacant shops. As a matter of fact, there's a piece of land directly on the east of Kohl's, within the Kohl's Center, that is available for development of a new store or stores. However, no one seems to be interested in developing anything on that site. What makes you think that a new center will be successful? Your dream. I challenge that a new center will only bring more traffic to the area and will not enhance the quality of life for the residents in the surrounding neighborhood. We do not want or need a new center. As I stated earlier, this site should remain zoned PL for public institutional land, and this council should consider encouraging either a college annex or a vocational-type trade school to take over this site. I recognize that a college annex or a trade school increase traffic in the area. However, for me and the neighbors I've spoken to, and I've spoken to very many of them, we would much rather have an educational, educational facility at this location rather than some kind of shopping center. You now have an opportunity to show the residents of the surrounding neighborhood that this city council cares about its residents, and do not rezone this site to allow another unwanted, unneeded shopping center. Thank you. Now, I just wanted to, just while I have a couple of extra seconds, before I came here, I didn't rec, I didn't realize that the property's in escrow, which basically means, I guess, this was a done deal. So why are we even here? Why even bother with this? Why have the public make a comment if it's a done deal? I hope it's not a done deal, and you guys in a few minutes are going to have an opportunity to let me know whether this was and, or is a done deal. We'll see how you vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. And next up, Mark Sellers, followed by Steve Valoria. Hello, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Sellers, with Ejection of Marco Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the, the buyer of this property, and I just would like to start off with a little historical note. I remember a few years ago, I met with Grant Brimhall, the city manager, Alex Fiori, a council member, with the idea that we needed to get the school use off of this site. It's not a good site for a school use. It does not generate any sales tax. It does not generate any tax return to the city. The goal of the city council was then to get this school relocated somewhere else. In that meeting, I suggested that we utilize a development agreement to try to get Mr. Chappell to provide land for this school use. Everybody agreed that was a great idea. We entered into that development agreement. That land did not work out because of some siting issues. However, to correct Joel, that was 30 years ago. The effort to relocate this school and get it to a more acceptable school site rather than on a major freeway in Southern California has been a goal of this city and the district for 30 years or more. And it makes sense. This is not a good site for a school. This is a site that's a good site for retail. Retail loves traffic counts. The freeway provides traffic counts. A retail use on this site will generate the sales tax to the city as well as property tax to the city. So with that in mind, and finally seeing light at the end of this relocation tunnel, I would ask that the council would support the rezoning and the development agreement. As far as the uses, we do not have any definite uses at the moment. The reason for that is we cannot really gauge the ultimate commercial users out there until we have a date when we know the school will be relocating. We have a leaseback agreement. That could take a couple of years. It may even take longer than a couple of years to get the new school built and get them into that new school. At that time, we will measure the market and the needs for what type of commercial users are out there willing to locate into a new center at this site. So the plans right now are just wait till the school's ready to physically relocate, and then at that time, come in with a development permit to the city. With any, I can answer any questions, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Ms. Bill Lepenya.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. The city council about eight years ago discussed, maybe it was less than that, the possibility of a family recreation center, and it was widely presented in the newspapers. So it's not news, or new news, that this property has always been basically on the market. So I was just, I'll wait in two years then to see what will become of that site, but hopefully it will have a component that would be amenable to family recreation.
It may. We'll test the market at that time and see what the interest is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. And next we have Steve Valoria.
Good evening, council members.
Hello, Steve.
Thank you for having me today. I am a resident of Newberry Park within the city of Thousand Oaks. I have my wife Laura here. My name is Steve Valoria, by the way. And we've been here for 25 years. We've raised three children within CBUSD, had one of our sons go through a little bit of a rough period, who actually went to Caneo Valley High School. And I'm happy to say that on Saturday, he's graduating with honors from Northridge. So the school really has done great things for the community. We moved our business here about 15 years ago, and we've been strong residents, both from a business standpoint and as homeowners and, and again, raising our children within the school system. We, our lease on the current building that we're in, which is 667 Rancho Caneo, comes up in the same period of time as the escrows are scheduled to close on this. And we had an understanding with the management company that handles the property, that as always, as we've done over the last 15 years, that we would be renewing that lease, or because businesses have been picking up, potentially purchasing the property, and that there would be somewhat of a handshake, a first write refusal on that. We found out that this deal was in place when my wife, who reads the papers, saw in the acorn that the two properties were being acquired by CBUSD for the maintenance project in question. At that point, obviously, I contacted the management company, who basically said that they were not at liberty to disclose or even disclose any awareness of anything going on. I contacted the CBRE agent handling the property, who actually moved us in there, has renegotiated our lease. We've known him for years. Same thing, zipped mouth on the thing. Finally, about a week later, a inspector came in representing CBUSD to inspect the property. And I thought, that's strange. That usually doesn't happen until they're in escrow. But I wasn't there at the time, and my managers at the business had not heard anything from the management company. They didn't authorize them to go ahead and inspect it. They gave me the name of the inspector. I contacted the inspector at CBUSD, who then put me in touch with a representative for CBUSD, which was actually their broker, who told me, when he realized that I was, you know, aware of this transaction now, that the property was in escrow. Already, that the school district had every intention, though, to work with us, to meet with us in the following week, work out, giving us more time, perhaps some rent abatement to make it smooth, didn't want to do anything to displace a business in the community. So I took that gentleman at his word, and I found out later that that wasn't true. As it turns out, that was basically a ruse to keep us from putting an offer in on the property. I then immediately moved to put an offer in on the property ourselves, because we didn't want to displace our employees and our business from the city, at which point I found a Realtor that just wouldn't move fast enough to take an offer before the deal actually did go into escrow. So I, I bring this to the council's attention because I think that the city agencies have a, have a responsibility ethically to their constituents to act the same way the rest of us do. In business, in, in any other real estate deal, you would have the Realtors clamoring to get multiple offers. The owners would want to know immediately that, you know, the current tenant, you know, was interested in getting in a bidding war with another buyer. But instead, this was kept under wraps, and it was done so because everybody involved in the transaction was intentionally keeping it confidential. So the thing about this is, is that, you know, I think I heard staff say earlier that, that, you know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't be appropriating funds from a general fund to, or from a redevelopment fund at all, and offering any amount of money to a buyer for coming into the property. Well, why, why isn't this within the same world that the rest of the citizens and businesses here and constituents have to live in? There is no reason whatsoever that the city should be misappropriating redevelopment funds to a buyer just to take care of making sure that the property has enough value to make this deal happen. Now, I heard the representative for the buyer talk about tax base, okay? I brought $150 million in business to the city and hundreds of jobs, which are now going to go away. That's not going to be displaced by the tax, the sales tax generated from a property, where I would urge the city council members themselves to drive along and see that there are, as the gentleman mentioned before, every third storefront along Newberry Road is empty with a "for lease" sign. The city does not need this. I also, and thank you for your time, Mr. Specter, meeting and briefing me on the project. I also understand that-
Mr. Valori, I have to ask you to finish up, please.
Okay, quickly. I understand that the finance director has said that you have estimates for this. In, for my meeting with Mr. Specter, I understand- For my meeting with Mr. Specter, I understand these estimates are well over a decade old. And if I ran my business that way and made decisions based on that, we wouldn't be in business. So I would urge the city to at least pause to get some current estimates of what this is going to cost before misappropriating these redevelopment funds.
Thank you, Mr. Valori.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our speaker cards. Mr. Specter, any follow-up?
Uh, no, I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Mr. Prescott, do you have anything to add?
Just a few points.
Go ahead.
Number one, the subject property has been designated for future commercial development on the city's general plan since it was adopted since 1970. And when it was adopted in 1970, and as you've heard from testimony, the city and the district have worked cooperatively since the mid-'80s to try to relocate the Continuation High School and the maintenance and warehouse facilities to more appropriate locations and newer facilities, particularly in the case of the Continuation High School. There was a reference to the escrow, and maybe the representative of the district will testify to this in rebuttal, but the escrow is contingent upon, to my understanding, contingent upon the city council approving zone change, so it's not a done deal in that sense. But it does, you know, the staff recommendation, the recommendation for the zone change and the development agreement are consistent with adopted city policy and with the desires that we both have to have that property redeveloped. And that's the only comments I have.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. And Mr. Kirschenstein, you have a few minutes for rebuttal, if you'd care to.
Thank you, Joel Kirschenstein. I think we need to clarify one point, and that's the educational intent. This California Department of Education no longer approves school sites 500 feet from a freeway. Period. The only reason this school site is there is because it was placed there, you know, over 100 years ago. But you can no longer get schools approved 500 feet from a freeway because of the air quality issues. So if we were coming forward with an application to the California Department of Education, this school site would not fly for every single criteria that the California Department of Education has, including its 100-year-old facility, plus or minus, that was designed for an elementary school with no high school, no secondary programmatic components to it at all. So the district has been in a makeshift situation, and a situation that it is very critical that the district relocate. So the educational program and the health, safety, and welfare, including the structural components of the school, are the driving force of what we have here. There are no state school construction funds that were alluded to. There are no bond funds available for anything right now. And they won't be for any district like the Canejo Valley Unified School District, which has declining enrollments. So there's no state school construction money for anything like this. And I think one thing is extremely important. There was an allusion as to, this just happened tonight. There's a statutory requirement that only school districts have, and that's a noticing process for its surplus property and just about anything that it wants to do related to real estate transactions. All of this has been on public agendas. It has been duly noticed. There has been ample opportunity before school boards, city councils, planning commissions for years now, for people to come in and testify. So there has been no, nothing behind the scenes. There has been nothing that has ever taken place that has only been in the public arena, that has only been on school board agendas, publicly noticed, and city council and planning commission agendas. There has been no behind-the-scenes meetings. All of the meetings having to do, and I've been present for every one of those for this last 10 years, which has been the active participation of the properties, including the hearings and the meetings having to do with the preservation of the school. This has been the most publicly discussed properties that I have ever experienced as someone who works in this day in and day out. As far as the lease issues, those two properties that the district addressed were on multiple listings. It's the first time we have ever heard of anything. I'll certainly speak to the gentleman after the meeting to find out that there's anything that can be done regarding those lease issues. That's, the owner of that property put his property in a multiple listing, and the district responded to it. It's as simple as that. But again, we'll certainly take a look at that. So again, those would be my closing remarks. There's significant benefits that far outweigh anything that we can possibly discuss regarding the educational programs and the removing of a maintenance and operations center that is right behind a residential neighborhood, backs up right to it. So those are some of the moving forces. I just wanted to clarify the health, safety, and welfare issues of why that school is being relocated and needs to be relocated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschenstein. All right. Any questions for staff? Mr. Kirschenstein, Ms. Bill Verpeneo.
Yeah, the question I have, obviously, I was surprised to hear from Mr. Valoria about his experience, and I cannot dismiss it. So I would like to know, it is, he mentioned $150 million, hundreds of employees. Have we taken steps to see if, what other location sites can be found?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Midnick.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's not on the agenda here tonight, but however, this is news to us as well, but that's not part of the discussion here. We will certainly follow up with the gentleman. We'll have our, Hader Alawami, our economic development manager, will call you. He would like to, speaking for him, I know he will want to meet with you, find out about your business, and he'll make you aware of other potential locations. And we would like to, if you have a business with 150 jobs in this community, we want you to stay here. But the details between this user and the landlord, that's beyond this agenda item here tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Heer.
I just want to confirm Mr. Midnick's comments. Again, the agenda is very specific for tonight. I believe the applicant was mentioning the other property just as a information purposes only. Again, I would concur with Mr. Midnick's conclusion. Again, this is something that we have to be very limited on with your discussion and questions because of the agenda itself. This is about Kelly Road tonight.
All right. Thank you. So we will follow up with Mr. Valoria at another time.
Tomorrow morning.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing and open this issue up for discussion. And our motion, Mr. Fox.
I'm going to move the recommendations one, two, and three, that the ordinance be introduced, read and titled only, further ready to be waived, that also the zone change and the ordinance to approve the development agreement, and also the authorize the expenditure for the redevelopment successive, successor agency bond. This, as has been pointed out, this discussion has occurred over literally three decades since I've been on the council. This has been discussed with respect to relocation of this school site to another site in Rancho Canejo was certainly something that's been discussed for quite some time. I think the representative of the school district pointed out, it cannot be a school site with respect to state law, and this area is really a key area in terms of land use for a commercial-type project. I do want to comment that as all projects come before the city, there will be planning commission hearings, there will be possibly city council hearings, so there is an opportunity for residents to voice their concerns regarding the impacts of any proposed development. While this agreement with the school district has been around for a long time, it does not necessarily guarantee a approved project. So I think that needs to be clarified. But this is a good thing for the school district. It makes sense, and as, again, this council, for many, many years, has been discussing this exact issue here tonight, and I'm certainly going to recommend the council approve this recommendations, one, two, and three.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Bill Verpeneo.
Yes, it is unfortunate that we have some residents tonight who voiced their opinions, and obviously, this is something that has been in the works for quite some time. And I'm really sorry that it is now coming to your attention, but this is something that, as has already been stated, we worked on and have been working on with the school district for many, many years. It was publicized in the papers. We had many public hearings and discussions on this several years ago. Last year, I believe, is as late as last year, when one of the deals actually fell through. It was reported in the newspapers. So this is nothing that was hidden from the public, I have to say, and I'm a very strong proponent of transparency. This was not hidden from the public at all. So it does disturb me that there is that impression that there were some backroom deals, when I feel there really haven't been any backroom deals, but nonetheless, we want to make sure that everybody walks away somewhat satisfied from this recommendation. The school district does need to move its school site to a different location. It just cannot remain where it is. And I hope that with this motion here tonight, that the school district will finally be able to move on and do the plans that it had envisioned for a long, long time, and which could not have happened without city council approval or planning commission approval and the assistance of city staff. This was truly a collaboration, many years in the making. So tonight is now a conclusion, but as Mr. Fox mentioned, there will be other public hearings regarding this. So I will support the motion, and I hope that this will be a successful transition and transaction, not only for the school district, but also for the City of Thousand Oaks and for our employers here in the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill Verpeneo. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think I should just go on record here, rather than by way of just a green light coming on here. Since I've been on the council, actually, since I was on the planning commission, I watched the deliberations over this property, and it has been a council goal since then that the school be relocated. And as has been mentioned, everybody has worked long and hard so that that day would come, and we're finally here. I will also echo some of Councilmember Fox's comments, that any subsequent project would need to come before a number of bodies, so that too will have its day in the public hearing. So with that, I am going to support the motion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Yeah, and just to be clear, this $3 million that has been designated for the project, that was money raised through the redevelopment agency. Redevelopment agencies have been disbanded. We could have lost that money quite easily, but the state of California saw it as an enforceable obligation and allowed us to keep the money as long as we use it for this particular project. And so that is what has to be done. Otherwise, we give it back to the state, which I don't think anybody really wants to do. Hey, you know, the zone change is compatible with the area surrounding it. The district doesn't want to be there anymore. Mr. Kirschenstein brought up a good point. The particulate matter there is a pollution problem, and students can't be exposed to that. We didn't know that 100 years ago. Well, of course, there was no freeway there 100 years ago. The facilities are obsolete. The school district needs the money to relocate to a much more favorable position, and as all my fellow council members said, this is not a done deal as far as what's going to be there ultimately. We don't know, and we'll have a say in that. And we'll listen to all the community's input as far as the final disposition of this property. So I'm going to support the motion as well. And Ms. Bill Verpeneo has a final comment.
Thank you. Before Mr. Fox makes his final comments as a maker of the motion, I just wanted to reiterate my appreciation for preserving Timber School as a historical landmark. That is extremely important to preserve the history of Thousand Oaks. It is, I believe, the cultural heritage board also found, the oldest building in Thousand Oaks. So thank you for looking out for Timber School.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor.
The motion carries 4-0, and I have two ordinance titles to read. An ordinance amending municipal code relating to official zoning maps and changing zoning classification of property at southeast corner of Kelly Road and Newberry Road, Z2014-70198, applicant, Canejo Valley Unified School District. And the other ordinance is an ordinance approving development agreement between city and Canejo Valley Unified School District concerning land use restrictions and limited authorization to use RDA bond proceeds for infrastructure improvements relative to property on southeast corner of Kelly and Newberry Road, DAGR 2014-70197, applicant, Canejo Valley Unified School District.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. We will move on now to a department report about the housing assistance program for seniors, and Melissa Hurtado will give us that report. Good evening, Ms. Hurtado.
Good evening. Let me get set up here. One moment. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Adam and city council members. I'm here tonight, along with John Prescott and Jamie Boscarino, to discuss the housing assistance program for seniors, or HAPS, as it's more commonly known. So I'd like to give you a little history on the program, how the dissolution of the redevelopment agency has affected the program, and provide a current status. In 1984, the city's redevelopment agency recognized that housing costs were rising, whether it be rent, utilities, insurance, or maintenance. These rising costs were having an adverse effect on some of our senior citizens who live on a fixed low income. The housing assistance program for seniors was created, allowing eligible seniors and disabled persons to apply for a quarterly subsidy payment to go toward their household expenses. The funding came from the redevelopment agency's 20% low moderate income fund. Periodically, the income levels and subsidy amounts were adjusted. HAPS applicants are required to come to City Hall to apply for the program. They need to prove they live in the city, are at least 62 years old or disabled, and must also provide proof of their household income. In addition to their original application, recipients must renew each year and provide current income information. In 2012, when the state dissolved redevelopment agencies, the city included HAPS funding on the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or ROPS. We received approval, and although we did have to close the program to new applicants, we were able to continue to provide subsidy payments to existing recipients through the RDA successor agency. The number of participants in HAPS has been declining since its peak in 2005, 2006. There was a sharp decline between fiscal years 2012-13 and 2013-14, after the program was closed to new applicants. We also anticipate that the 2014-15 figure will drop a bit before the end of June. So here is a breakdown of the fiscal years, this fiscal year statistics. This table provides the number of participants within the various levels of income, along with their corresponding quarterly subsidy, and the total cost of those subsidies. On April 24th of this year, we received notification from the California Department of Finance that HAPS is no longer qualified as a recognized obligation. We have therefore lost our funding source for this program effective July 1st. Although we have lost our funding source for HAPS, staff feels that an abrupt end to the program would create a hardship for the recipients. Instead, we are recommending that the city council approve emergency funding for the program for one additional year using general fund reserves. We also recommend that during the year, staff work with local nonprofit organizations to find alternatives to HAPS that may help these citizens in coming years. And we are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Questions for Ms. Hurtado? No questions? All right. Then I would only say that we've had a situation here where... Then, I would only say that we've got a situation here where the rug kind of got pulled out from underneath some folks, and I think it's, the recommendation is an altruistic one, shall we say, by the city, but I think it would make sense, perhaps. How many participants are in this program, total?
We currently have 370.
370? Well, if it's not, you know, completely out of the question and difficulty that these residents be, sent a letter to let them know what the state of the program is, and where, where we may be going in the future.
Absolutely.
All right? I think that makes sense. So, any, there's no further discussion. Ms. Bill of opinion, would you care to make a motion on this?
I certainly would. I approve staff recommendation of this program.
All right. Motion on the floor. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, and that passes. Very good. We don't have any committee or commission reports, we don't have a closed session meeting tonight. I will only say that, congratulations to the New West Symphony for celebrating their 20 years in Thousand Oaks. World-class music. And we have three volunteer organizations that are also celebrating their 20 years. Friends of the Civic Arts Plaza, the library volunteers, and the volunteers in policing who are also receiving the Spirit of Community Award through the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. We couldn't do it without our volunteers. Volunteerism is alive and well in the city of Thousand Oaks. Any other comments from my fellow members? Mr. Price?
Thank you very much. Yes, if I could, please, just like to announce that tomorrow night is Thousand Oaks Host Town's first restaurant night, and that restaurant night will be a fundraising event for the Special Olympics World Games, that we have four countries coming, with 100 athletes coming to Thousand Oaks in July, and we just need to raise a little bit of money to be able to house, feed, and entertain them while they're here. So, tomorrow night is, is the first of several restaurant nights, and I'm trying to, as we speak, I want to be able to announce those restaurants, and I can probably do it from memory. So, if you, everybody, I assume, is going to eat tomorrow night, so if you would be so kind to go as, go to either Drafts, Saucy's, Westlake Village Cisco's, CPK, or BJ's, or there's one more, and I'm missing it, it is Galetto, over there in the Westlake Plaza Shopping Center. So, any of those restaurants are participating, and proceeds from the night sales will go to the Host Town activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and thank you very much for all the work you're doing on the Special Olympics.
If I could say one other thing, too, we actually have-
By all means.
Thank you. We actually have, the only athlete from Ventura County who will be competing in the world, Special Olympics World Games this summer, is a young man by the name of Eric, who lives here in Thousand Oaks, and he will be competing in bowling. So, he will be, he has chosen to go to Drafts tomorrow night. So, if you want to see him, I'm sure he'd like to see you, and it'd be great if we could have some of the community members get out there and meet him. I unfortunately am leaving here moments from now to get on a plane, so I won't be there. But, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and again, thank you for all the work you've expended on the Special Olympics. I believe you rounded up those restaurant sponsors yourself, did you not? Well, that's quite good. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to end this meeting, and we will see you in two weeks.